Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Town of Sykesville's Mayor and Town Council Meeting. Today is Monday, June 14th. We will call the meeting to order right now at 7:02 PM. And since Carrie's got the agenda up on there, you guys will be able to see the information I'm about to read. Anybody that's watching us live on Facebook and would like to participate actively by providing public comment, you will need to actually call in via Zoom teleconference, and that number is 301-715-8592. And then you'll be prompted for an ID code for the meeting, and that's 837-590-59906563. And then you'll be prompted again for a passcode, which is 137-899. Or you can join the meeting online via Zoom link also showing on the agenda on the screen. The Zoom teleconference information is always posted publicly with each meeting agenda. So if there is anyone wishing to make public comment this evening, you will need to call in. And while we stand to do the pledge allegiance, you guys can work on doing that, connecting to the meeting in that way. So we'll stand for the pledge and then have a follow with a moment of silence. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So a moment of silence. Okay. Everyone, I'm gonna put that agenda back up for us, Carrie. So the first order of business tonight is public comments. Please note the public comments are limited to three minutes per person. If you are on the phone and would like to make a comment, please press star nine. Otherwise, if you are on via the Zoom online, you click on the raise hand button. And I'm gonna ask Carrie at this moment if there is anyone with a hand raised or anyone that has called in.
There is not.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we'll move right directly into our consent agenda. The next item is the consent agenda consisting of only one item, which are the minutes from May 24th. For the benefit of our council and the public listening in, consent agendas are inclusive of items that would normally not require discussion before approval. So we're gonna do this just slightly differently for the for the council's sake. I'll always ask if there are any objections or need for us to pull something from the consent agenda. But tonight, obviously, there's only one item, and it's the minutes. But if there were more than one item and there was objection or need for discussion, we would pull that item and then we would be able to discuss it separately. So with consent agendas, if there's not any objection or need for discussion, then the remaining consent agenda can then be approved without actually making a formal motion. So this evening's consent agenda only containing one item, the minutes from May 24th. Are there any questions or objections regarding this evening's consent agenda? Okay, so without objection, then this item is approved. And we'll move on to unfinished business. First up is the public hearing on ordinance number 2021-04, which is the budget revisions for fiscal year 2021. Joe, is there any need for you to say anything for us before we open this public hearing?
Yeah, it's just one one quick change from when it was introduced last meeting regarding. There was two two entries, one was on the revenue side, the interest line item on the revenue side and the bad debt expense on the on the expense side of things. This was a clarification that actually was requested through our auditors. So again, as we accrue interest throughout the fiscal year, if it's not expected that that interest actually be collected, usually we just write it off as as a reduced revenue. But our auditors are actually saying with some of this accrued interest, it really should go into the bad debt expense because it is related to the note that's still due to the town from the Warfield development. So rather than just writing it off as not collected, we actually just increase an expense line item into the the bad debt expense. So that's the only change between the introduction and hopefully adoption tonight.
Okay. So I guess at this point I need a motion from someone to open the public hearing. Okay, so moved by Councilwoman Leo Keenan, and I have a second. Anna?
Second, sorry, I hate myself.
Good deal, seconded by Councilwoman Anna Carter. I should actually say Council President Anna Carter, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I don't think I see anyone left but any nays. All right, so that passes the open, the the hearing is now open. All right, and that brings us to the opportunity for the public. Oh, and I should note the time, the public hearing is open at 7:07, Carrie. And so with the public meeting, a public comment session open, I'll call now for any public comment. And ask Carrie if anyone's got a hand raised.
I do not.
Okay. All right, so hearing none, at this point, we can quickly motion to close the public hearing. Anyone have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Grassley, do I have a second?
Second.
And Mark, welcome, welcome aboard, seconded by Mark, Councilman Mark Dyer, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And again, I think that was everyone, anyone opposed? Okay, so unanimously, the open hearing is now closed. Next is, the next item is for the council to consider, discuss, and act upon that ordinance for the public hearing that we just closed, ordinance number 2021-04 budget revisions for fiscal year 2021. Does the council have any questions for the staff regarding the proposed budget revisions? Okay. So nobody has any questions, so now I'll ask for a motion to approve ordinance number 2021-04 budget revisions for fiscal year 2021. Moving right along to new business. We'll now discuss the, or open, I should say, the public hearing on the proposed vision 2030 Town of Sykesville Comprehensive Plan. And I'll let Joe add anything or announce anything for us before we open up that public hearing.
Well, really, Mayor, I just wanted to take a minute and just express some sincere appreciation for the hard work of so many that have put in the time and effort to to create the the comprehensive plan that's before you tonight. And particularly the members of our advisory committee that met regularly for for many months when the when the project started, providing valuable guidance on the direction of this draft. And then, of course, the Town Planning Commission, who has reviewed and re-reviewed this document several times over the last several months. And just to make sure that it was ready for for council consideration tonight. All the town staff members who who helped facilitate most of the meetings along the way, and they provided insight and information throughout every step of the drafting of the of the comprehensive plan. And this includes the Carroll County planning staff, who helped facilitate a lot of the the county department comments and make sure that they were they were incorporated as well. And then certainly, we wouldn't be here tonight if it wasn't for our great consultant team there at Michael Baker International, namely Troy Truax, Vanessa Shamberg, Peter Quintanilla, and Kirsten Campatello. In particularly Vanessa, I know she did a lot of the heavy lifting, particularly with most of the phone calls that that I had. She took the brunt of of most of those. So without that group, this draft wouldn't be what it is before you tonight. So I just wanted again to say thank you to to everyone that provided comments and made suggestions along the way. I believe that this document before you tonight really does represent a community effort in in comprehensive planning. So we hope the public hearing goes smoothly, I imagine it will, and staff enthusiastically recommends the the comp plan for adoption tonight.
Awesome. So yes, I want to thank everyone involved as well. And this this is a product that we all should be super duper proud of, and who knows, maybe we'll get an Emmy for it or the equivalent for for master plans. So is there a motion to open the public hearing? And then ask Carrie if we have any public comments on the proposed 2030 Comprehensive Plan? And again, just remind everyone that anyone that's listening, if you are on the phone or would like to make a comment, please press star nine or otherwise press raise your hand if you're on your Zoom screen there.
We do not have anybody.
I'd like to make a comment. But unfortunately, no, I already did that. It's this is a magnificent plan. I saw, I watched the people make it, and we should, we are proud of them for a reason.
Awesome. Well, with no public comment other than Mark Dyer on the council, which will give him a chance to say even more if he'd like, I'm going to ask for a motion to close the the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing for the comprehensive plan?
Thank you, Councilman Grassley, second.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Mark Dyer, all in favor?
Aye.
That's everyone, but out loud, any opposed? All right, and of course, I'm in favor of closing the open hearing as well. So all that passes unanimously, so we are now closed to public comment. But now it's time for the council to consider, discuss as needed, and act upon the proposed vision for 2030 Town of Sykesville's Comprehensive Plan. Do any of the council have any questions for staff regarding the proposed Comprehensive Plan or comments that in general that they'd like to share? Okey dokey, well then, is there a motion to approve? This drumroll, please, a motion to approve the Comprehensive Plan Vision 2030 Town of Sykesville's Comprehensive Plan, anyone?
So moved, I make a motion that we approve the draft Vision 2030 Plan.
Al, did you want to second that?
Sure, I'll second it.
Okay, very good, thank you. So we have a a motion and a second, a motion from Mark Dyer and a second from Councilman Grassley, all in favor?
Aye.
Resounding, resigning, yes, any any nays, any opposed? All right, so that's a unanimous passing of our Comprehensive Plan. So we get to the announcements and reports section of our agenda. The first announcement will be mine, and that is that the next Mayor and Town Council meeting is scheduled for July 12th at 7:00 PM. And I'm actually gonna take this opportunity to announce my plans to hold a workshop, and I want to talk to you guys about this. I want to hold a workshop for the council where I'd like to discuss liaison positions amongst us all as, you know, the liaison position for our standing commissions, as well as a new concept regarding some committees or some select committees of what we can decide we want to call them. Joe and I have discussed and identified at least three standing committees. I'm sorry, three select committees, ordinance, finance, and personnel committees. And ideally, there'd be two council members and myself making up each one of those committees. And because we only have one meeting in the summer months, so we only have one scheduled for July and August, we can approach scheduling the workshop in one of, I guess, two or three ways. I guess one would be could actually schedule this workshop and any future workshops that we all deem necessary. We can add them to the calendar for meetings, which I'm probably not in favor of and would love to hear what you guys have to say about that, but it might be necessary at times. Or we can actually maybe replace the business meeting, the regularly scheduled business meeting for a workshop like this. In that case, if we wanted to do that, I do want to do it sooner than later. So I might propose that we either replace the next business meeting with this workshop or like a hybrid, a third option would be to do the most pressing unfinished business, if there is any for next for the next regular scheduled business meeting, and then adjourn that meeting and go right into our workshop. So I guess I'll just open it up to you guys. You know, this specific thing was not on the agenda, this is more an announcement, but I just want to announce that this is something that that I'd like to do and I just want your feedback as to whether or not you'd be in favor of one of any one of those three options to get something like this scheduled.
Mayor Link, I'd be in favor of hybrid number three. So if there's something pressing, then we can have it on the agenda and then go into our workshop. But if there's nothing pressing, then we would go directly into our workshop. And of course, that would give public notice enough time to let us that let them know what we're gonna do.
Like it, anyone else?
I agree with that approach.
Cool.
So do I.
Agreed.
Okay, so that's one, two, three, four, how about Lisa?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, awesome. So I'll ask Joe and staff to put together, I'll meet with him, and we'll put something together for this workshop, a little, you know, with an agenda for the workshop, and and we'll disseminate that in a timely fashion. And so at this point, Joe, I don't know of anything that there's no open hearings and unless something comes up between now and I guess a week and three days, five days, oh, no, it'd be a month from now, so in the next two weeks, if something pressing comes up, we can throw that on as well. All right, cool. All right, so this is the part of the meeting where I get to announce that we still are in need of volunteers. For they're available for, volunteer positions are available for the Historic District Commission for Spark, which is Sykesville's Park and Rec Commission, the Board of Zoning Appeals, our police auxiliary, and school's out, so we don't need a crossing guard or will be very soon, right? I mean, is school completely out? You can tell I don't have kids.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, I thought it actually was last Friday, okay, good. So unless somebody wants to come down and crossing guard tomorrow, will we do really? I'm serious about this position, this is something we've been talking about for a long time, even before COVID and the closures of schools. But this is truly something that our police do and take care of on a regular for our kiddos who are needing to cross Springfield Avenue to get to the middle school. And it really is a good opportunity for for some, you know, some community integration with with our residents and and the kids. And give yourself, give some time for that, and I think it actually would be somewhat fulfilling. If if it were me, I would, I would actually consider it if I weren't doing this job. So anyway, looking for someone to be interested in our crossing guard. So other than that, if you're interested in any of the aforementioned volunteer positions, please contact the town via email at town@sykesville.net for more information, that gets us to staff updates, take it away, Joe.
Well, just talking about the potential workshop, I will say we will likely have to have some sort of hybrid type meeting where we have a brief council meeting and then work into the workshop or go into the workshop. Because one of the things we are working on still, fine tuning, is the the memorandum of understanding between the town and the downtown Sykesville connection is due for renewal this year, so we are putting the the final touches on that. I hope to get a draft out to council here in the next few days, just to give everybody an opportunity to to look it over before we ask you to adopt that on July 12th. In addition to that is the, I know we've talked about this at a previous meeting too, is the subrecipient agreement for for Warfield for the Strategic Demolition Grant that we've been working on. There is still a few outstanding items, one that our town attorney brought up regarding some some potential liability that the town has to the state with regard to that funding that we're trying to work out, particular language to pass that liability on to the actual beneficiaries of that money. So once we get that that kind of figured out, again, we should be all set to go with the subrecipient agreement. So hopefully, both of those items are worked out and and we can get done relatively quickly at the July 12th meeting. Other than that, the town is still working through the American Rescue Plan funding. We still do not know exactly how much funding we're gonna be getting, but we've been working with the municipal league and making sure that all the town's documents or necessary documents that have to be submitted to the state are submitted so that we will qualify for that funding, we will be receiving it. Obviously, as we as we learn more and and work through that process, we'll make sure council stays up to date. The council room updates are still ongoing. We're still looking at probably July as a potential, at least test month, at the very least, to go back to in-person meetings. Again, I think I said this at the last meeting, is we could go to in-person meetings now, however, we wouldn't be able to broadcast as easily as we're going to be once these upgrades are made. So we'll probably continue doing these virtual meetings until all of that is is finished because people have really taken to these these broadcasted meetings on a regular basis. And I think it does improve our messaging to the to the community this way. And then finally, just a reminder that MML is coming up at the end of the month. I think there are five of us that are going, or five of the council members that are going. If you need any information on that or or or, you know, any any logistical information, just just reach out to either Carrie or I, and we can make sure that that everybody's set for for MML. That's all I have.
So Joe, with respect to the MOU for the downtown Sykesville connection, I know in the past, when we've been reviewing and and for lack of better terms, negotiating the the MOU, there've been unfortunately like multiple versions of an MOU, like the one that we look at and review and the one that the board, the downtown Sykesville Connection Board looks at and reviews, and they comment and mark up. I wonder if it wouldn't be just more streamlined for us, for us to wait to get their feedback on their, on the MOU, when I say their, I mean the the DSC's boards feedback after their next meeting, and then I'm sure you'll be in touch with them, and then when that's been reviewed and marked up, that be the version that we look at? Would that make sense?
That's fine, that's no problem.
Yeah, so so instead of us expecting it in the next few days, maybe after sometime after you hook up with them after their board meeting?
Okay, I know, and Councilman Keenan can correct me if I'm I'm wrong. I think their their next meeting is on the 20th, the board meeting?
Monday, the 21st.
21st, sorry. So sometime after then, you can expect the MOU.
Okay, very cool. And then, so with that, Joe's finished, Craig, can you please provide us with the treasurer's report?
I can do that. Good evening, everybody, if anyone can hear me. At this time, I'd like to present the May treasurer's report. We're almost done the year, got one more month to go. Everything seems to be pretty much fine in line, both revenues and expenses with the budget, which is good news. Right now, as usual, in the revenue pocket, it's just the highway user revenue still is lagging a little bit. I don't think there's anything to be concerned about, I think it's just literally lagging through May. We've only collected like February's distribution, so there's still March, April, May, and potentially June distributions to come. So I think once they show up, hopefully very soon, that we'll catch up in that pocket. There's a, I don't know if you noticed, there's really not much of our revenue, but I thought I found it exciting that under the little Sykes Railway revenue, we finally have monies in there. It's finally up and running, and we've been collecting about a hundred and some dollars a week, so. It's only like $200 right now, but we've already collected like $260 this month, so it's just stuff is starting to move again, and it's it's exciting to me to start seeing.
It's it's more exciting to me to know that it's getting as much activity than it is, right? More than the revenue that it's bringing in.
Well, right, well, I meant.
No, I know that's what you meant, I'm just pointing, I'm clarifying on your behalf, yes, yeah, thank you.
Now, you know Stacy, I really could see a profit there somehow, whatever, you know, how we could do that, but.
Yeah.
And then I heard, well, I don't want to like steal anyone's thunder, but obviously did well at the movie on Saturday, that's all say. In case Stacy, you want to say something in that regards, but. So in terms of like expenses, there's nothing out of the ordinary. So at this time, if does anyone have any questions that they would like to ask me in regards to the May treasurer's report?
Greg, I don't have a question, but I have a comment for you. Thank you very much for giving us our treasurer's report. I think with all of my years on town council, this is the closest to to current as I've ever seen our budget, thank you. Usually, we're like two months behind.
Well, obviously, Joe has definitely helped me speed it up, and we've done a really good job there in terms of like figuring it out and what makes sense, so. But I appreciate the comment, it it does feel good to to get almost there, to be almost like completely up to speed when I'm presenting the report, you know. If it was just through April, I'd feel like, here's June, I'm doing April, that's crazy. So I'm glad we finally got there, and we got a, I got a pretty good routine going and get it out to you guys on a timely basis and get, you know, it's a good report too, if you're, you know, having a sleepless night on the weekend, as you can do that too.
All right, great. Al, do you have any any questions about the highway?
I'm guilty of putting questions out to Craig on a sleepless night on the weekend, so thanks, I appreciate it too, Craig. For the for the for the highway user fund, if that's late, we're just gonna, we'll we'll just backdate it when it gets in there, if it comes after July 1st, is that the deal?
Yeah, that's what usually will happen. I'll just move it into the this year's budget, I mean, this year's fiscal year's information. So I'll just kind of accrue it and put it in there. Depends on how late it gets, I mean, if it gets ridiculous, can't really do much once the orders close things, but hopefully we'll have a couple of months before we can do that. And that's a good point, the orders are already starting to do their field work, they were here last week, and they've already started, so and they're gonna be in here at the end of July for a full week to crunch the numbers, so, but we'll still have time after that.
Okay, all right, thanks, thanks, Craig.
All right, so that brings us to our public safety report from from the chief, take it away, chief.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, everyone. We're gonna talk about the public safety report covering May 17th through June 7th, so about three weeks. There's a, uh, I don't know if you noticed, this is really not much of a revenue, but I thought, I found it exciting that under the little Sykes Railway revenue, we finally have monies in there. It's finally up and running and, uh, we've been collecting about a hundred and some dollars a week. So, uh, it's only like $200 right now, but we've already collected like $260 this month. So it's just stuff that's starting to move again and it's, it's exciting to me to start seeing.
It's, it's more exciting to me to know that it's getting as much activity than it is, right? More than the revenue that it's bringing in.
Well, right, well, I meant.
No, I know that's what you meant. I'm just pointing, I'm clarifying on your behalf. Yes. Yeah. Thank you.
Now, you know Stacy, uh, really, we could see a profit there somehow, whatever, you know? How we could do that, but.
Yeah.
And then I heard, well, well, I don't want to like steal anyone's thunder, but obviously did well at the movie on Saturday. That's all saying, in case Stacy, you want to say something in that regards, but. So in terms of like expenses, there's nothing out of the ordinary. Um, so at this time, if, uh, does anyone have any questions that they would like to ask me in regards to the May treasurer's report?
Greg, I don't have a question, but I have a comment for you. Thank you very much for giving us our treasurer's report. I think with all of my years on town council, this is the closest to, um, to current, as I've ever seen our budget. Thank you. Usually we're like two months behind.
Well, obviously Joe has definitely helped me speed it up and we've done a really good job there in terms of like figuring it out and what makes sense. So, but I appreciate the comment. It, it does feel good to, to get almost there, uh, to be almost like completely up to speed when I'm presenting the report. You know, if it was just April, I'd feel like here's June, I'm doing April, that's crazy. So I'm glad we finally got there and we got a, I got a pretty good routine going and get it out to you guys on a timely basis. And get, you know, it's a good report too, if you're, you know, having a sleepless night on the weekend, as you can do that too.
All right, great. Um, Al, do you have any, any questions about the highway?
Uh, I'm guilty of, uh, putting questions out to, uh, Craig on a sleepless night on the weekend. So thanks, I appreciate it too, uh, Craig.
Uh, for the, for the, for the highway user fund, if that's late, we're just gonna, we'll, we'll just backdate it when it gets in there.
If it comes after July 1st, is that the deal?
Yeah, that's what usually will happen. Uh, I'll just move it into the, this year's budget, I mean, this year's fiscal year's, uh, information. So I'll just kind of accrue it and put it in there. Depends on how late it gets. I mean, if it gets ridiculous, I can't really do much once orders close things. But, uh, hopefully we'll have a couple of months before we can do that. And that's a good point. The orders are already starting to do their, uh, field work. They were here last week and, uh, they've already started. So, and they're gonna be in here at the end of July for a full week to, uh, crunch the numbers. So, but we'll still have time after that.
Okay. All right. Thanks. Thanks, Craig.
Cool. All right. Um, so that brings us to our public safety report from, uh, from the chief. Take it away, chief.
Thank you, mayor. Good evening, everyone. Uh, we're going to talk about the public safety report covering May 17th through June 7th. So about three weeks, you'll see we had a total of 590 events, which is, uh, a good number of events for that, that period of time. Just some of the highlights are, um, we had what, nine assist other agency, uh, four community policing, 31 foot patrols, uh, 390 patrol checks, 45 traffic enforcement initiatives, again, for a total of 590 events. Um, I recently discovered, we, we've been pushing the guys to do more community policing initiatives. Going, I know that's not only important to me, but important to you as well. And I think some of the other initiatives have actually been, um, recorded under different subheadings. An example would be, um, special assignment. I noticed during the, uh, the gaming on Main Street, some of the officers recorded that as a special assignment where, uh, in, in reality would have been better, better labeled as a community policing event. So we're working on fixing that and getting those numbers up. And I have every confidence that, uh, our, our officers will respond accordingly. So I just wanted to let you know about that. Uh, during this period, we only had seven incident reports, which is relatively low for three weeks. Um, if you have any questions about any of those seven incident reports, I'd be more than happy to answer those for you.
I'm just scrolling through here to making sure I got nobody's hand up. Okay. So, um, thank you, chief, and, um, that brings us to our council committee reports. Um, does any, well, actually I should have asked chief, was, was there any other thing you wanted to add, chief? I know oftentimes after you're done with your report, you, I'm sorry.
If you would indulge me just real briefly. Uh, I'm sure many of you are aware that we lost our second most senior officer here recently. P F C Nick Betcher, uh, resigned to go to work for another agency. So, um, you know, we have had discussions with the mayor and, and town manager. We were all equally, um, what's the, what's the right word?
The clam.
Shocked, upset, and we hate to lose a valuable employee with over 12 years of service to the town. Um, but we tried our best, couldn't, couldn't convince him otherwise and he's moved on. So we wish him the best of luck in his new career. And, uh, I am in the process of trying to, to fill his vacancy. We do have two, uh, applicants that we're looking at that seem like a good fit. So, uh, we'll be vetting them here in the near future and, and hopefully, uh, replacing Nick, um, here in the very near future. Especially with this time of year with vacations and so forth, it's put us in a little bit of a bind. Uh, but we're going to work diligently to try to replace him as, as quickly. Uh, and, and more importantly, with, with the right person, the right fit. So just wanted to bring, bring you up to speed on that. And I wanted to say real quickly, um, a thank you to Julie from the downtown Sykesville Connection, uh, for helping to facilitate through Walmart, a donation of a ton of hand soap and hand sanitizer, uh, which thanks to Derek is sitting in our, our Parrot Building. Uh, that is to be divided amongst us and the, uh, Carroll County Sheriff's Office, as well as the Sykesville Freedom, uh, District Fire Department. I've already, um, dolled out the sheriff's department's portion and taken some of ours. And I'm waiting for the fire department to come collect it. But a very valuable commodity, uh, that we're very grateful to have. So, uh, kudos to Julie for being on top of that and making that happen.
Thank you, chief.
That's all I have. Unless you have any questions for me.
Great. Okay. Sorry about jumping the gun there, uh, chief. Uh, so next is our council committee reports.
Mayor, if I could jump in real quick, just a, a little bit of housekeeping, uh, two things. Uh, it's been brought to my attention that we did not actually vote to approve the consent agenda. So the minutes have not yet actually been approved yet.
So that's what I was saying at the beginning. Um, I've been reading the Roberts rules and consent agendas don't require a motion. They, they only require a motion if discussion or there's objection to the consent agenda. And that's the purpose of the consent agenda. So since there was no, um, uh, questions or objections, it was just by virtue of that, it, it by default there, it's approved. Um, but you know, just trying to save time, but talking about it, uh, right now probably put us right back where we were.
Well, then the only other item was the, uh, the treasurer's report, uh, usually gets a, usually gets a vote and it did not get a vote this time.
Of course it didn't. So do I have a motion? Thank you, Joe. Do I have a motion to approve the treasurer's report?
So moved.
Thank you, council president. And do I have a second?
Okay.
Second, thank you, Leo. And all in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? Okay, so the, uh, treasurer's report passes unanimously. Thank you. Now we get to the council committee reports. Does, um, anyone have any specific updates to share with the public regarding the commissions, um, to which you are a liaison? Go ahead, Anna.
Mayor Link, um, I just want to touch briefly that, uh, the Historic District did have a meeting on May the 25th. And we had four applications. One was to pave the driveway. One was for a new business sign. One was to make improvements to the exterior of the old Dunright, um, showroom. And the next was to renovate their warehouse. And that one is, um, still, it needs to go to the planning commission before it can come back to us. Um, other than that, that was it. Our next meeting is going to be the fourth, uh, Tuesday of July, which would be July the 26th, if we have applications.
We actually have a, a June meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry. I keep on missing the month that we're in. I'm sorry. So our next meeting would be June, the 28th, uh, I'm sorry, 29th. And do we have applications? Obviously we do, since we have a meeting.
I think it's actually the 22nd, if I'm, uh, not mistaken.
Yeah, you are correct. I am once again mistaken. I apologize.
You're good. And we do have applications, so there will be a meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Carrie. Keeping me straight.
It, it, nobody wants the summer to go that fast. I don't anyway. Um, anyone else there as far as a, a liaison report?
Mayor, I do.
Let's hear it. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Oh, okay. Um, well, just because it involved, we got some county updates about, there is a sewer master plan update and a transportation master plan update that's coming, uh, along with, um, some updates and, as we move forward towards annexation of what some of us are calling the pizza slice south of town that will bring in that small bit of land that we have thought for years, we were actually, was in our town, but it wasn't, but it will be. And, um, I did want to do one more comment, as I said earlier. Um, the, uh, planning commission did a lot of hard work on the master plan. They recommended it as unanimously as we did. And I think it's, uh, their hard work as long, as well as the people who actually generated it, such as the Michael Baker and the team. Um, but I did want to know, I did speak for the, for all of us in thanking them for their hard work collectively. Because, um, and I'll give a specific thanks to Julia Betts, um, having been a council member. She was, uh, doing her expert job as always of making sure that it was clear, crisply written and understandable. And, um, that's why, one of the reasons it turned out so well. But, um, and lastly, there, there is a discussion, you can even read about it in the paper, about a, a Greenway plan that is coming to fruition and, um, more will be learned about that, hopefully by the planning commission. But it's going to affect us all the way, from us all the way, as I understand it, to, um, Ellicott City. So this is going to be something we're going to learn more about, but I wanted to alert anyone listening in that we should pay attention to that. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Dyer. Anyone else?
Just briefly, barely.
Please, thank you, Leo.
Uh, just briefly from the downtown Sykesville Connection, uh, the farmer's market is doing very well. Everybody seems really excited to have that back with the expanded format. Uh, looks really good, really well run. I'm really happy with the way that's going. July 3rd, we have the Let Freedom Ring Parade, Saturday, July 3rd, from 10 a.m. to 11:30, starting at the middle school and working its way down to Main Street. Hope everybody can turn out and hopefully we'll have good weather for that. That's it.
Awesome. Thank you. And, um, Lisa, do you want to at least announce when the next, um, Sykesville Parks and Rec meeting is? Do you have that up in front of you by chance? I don't mean to catch off guard.
No, I can pull it up. Um.
I know that while you're looking, while you're looking for that, I know that there was, uh, the first cinema in the park, uh, this, this past Saturday. And I understand it was incredibly successful. Um, but, and I'm sorry, you found the, the meeting day?
Thursday, yes, Thursday, the 24th.
Okay, so Thursday, June 24th is the next park meeting. Great. And anyone else? I guess that's everyone. Um, are there any other comments, um, or items from the council or staff that would, uh, be appropriate for us to share with the public? Okay, uh, being no other business, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you. Motion by Leo Keenan, second. Second by, uh, Mark Dyer, all in favor?
Aye.
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 I say aye as well. So, uh, without any opposed, we are adjourned at seven 39 P M. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, mayor.